Oh, that was different. Yeah, we're ready to go then. All right, welcome everyone to the March 31st, 2015 Shakopee City Council Meeting. Call the meeting order. Ms. Ensign, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Whiting.
Here.
Councilmember Luce.
Here.
Councilmember Mokel.
Here.
Councilmember Lehman.
Here.
Mayor Tabke.
Here. I'll stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I had number three, approval of the agenda. Do we have any additions or corrections to the agenda this evening?
Nothing from staff, Mr. Mayor.
Anything from council? I'm taking a motion to approve the agenda. Councilmember Mokel.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second, Councilmember Luce. Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. We now need to call the EDA to order.
I'm calling the EDA to order. Will you please note the roll? And then, do we, you're gonna open the public hearing here, then I?
Uh, do we need to approve the agenda and stuff there first?
It doesn't say that on here, that's fine.
Do you, I didn't look at your...
Make a motion to approve the EDA.
You want me to approve the agenda?
Aye.
All right, first and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes.
All right, we are having a joint EDA and city council meeting this evening. Makes life go a lot easier for everyone. I need a motion to open a public hearing for city council.
Make a motion to open a public hearing.
Councilmember Whiting.
Second.
Second, Councilmember Mokel. Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. President Mokel.
I will make a motion to open a public hearing.
Don't move.
Mr. Whiting, a second?
Second.
Mr. Tabke. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes.
All right, we are in a public hearing this evening. Ms. DiMaggio.
Good evening. During the public hearing tonight, we are going to consider a tax increment financing district for RAR Corporation. RAR is here tonight to speak on their own behalf. I think that they will start first. And then, once they're done, I will have a short presentation for you. Mr. Tice, I believe, is here to speak on behalf of RAR.
Welcome.
Thank you. Do I sign in?
You probably should. Yeah, I get in trouble if you don't.
Should have a rubber stamp made.
Yeah, can I have a stamp made? Uh, it's great. We're here tonight to kind of give you a little bit of a background on RAR Malting. Give you a background on our projects that we've got lined up. And, and we're kind of gonna, we're gonna tag-team that effort. I was mentioning to everyone before we started that behind me, I have a group of RAR employees that represent 217 years of service to the company. It's pretty significant, but it does kind of exemplify the fact that we've been in town a long time. And we've got a committed workforce that's enabled us to do that. First slide I've got here is just to talk a little bit about the expansion itself and what it consists of. And by this slide, we show there are four separate projects. And I'll go in detail, but just to give you kind of a geographical position of where these things are. We've got the BSG Warehouse north of First Avenue. We've got the Tech Center located at the former CH Carpenter site at App Garn First. And we've got a RAR maintenance building over by Third Street and Pierce. And then, we've got the biggest project, which is the smallest footprint, is the malt house expansion, Malt House Number Six, located on Third Avenue, just across from the Bus Company. Now, a little more detail about those individual projects. The first project, the malt production facility, which is by far the greatest cost item. We're at a budgeted right now at somewhere around $57 million for this project alone. It is a full-scale malt production facility. You'll learn later that it's the first malt production facility built at Shakopee in 21 years. It is, uh, it's probably the first malt production facility built in North America in the last 11 or 12 years. But again, it has full steeping, germination, kilning functions. It's really designed to kind of handle the additional demand that we have from the craft customers. Sorry about that. The second one is the BSG Warehouse and Packaging Facility, and that's one that I think that I've spoken the most about and that you're probably most familiar. But in addition to being a warehouse facility, it's actually a full-scale automated packaging facility that will allow us to package and bag malt for the craft brewer specifically. And even beyond that, there is the potential future expansion to actually do homebrew packaging. The third project we've got is the Pilot Brewery of the Tech Center. And again, that's located at the CH Carpenter site. Currently, I, I updated this slide today at 9,500 square feet. As I left the meeting this afternoon at 2:30, it's now at 10,500 square feet. Two-story building. It has a full-scale brewery at the Level One. Elevated ceilings potentially as high as 15 to 18 feet tall to accommodate a full three hectoliter brewery, which would mimic what most craft breweries or nano breweries have as their production brewery. So it's a fairly large brewery, but it's designed to give us a full plant-scale testing of any of the ingredients that we use or sell from BSG. The fourth and final project that we've got is really the simplest one of all. It's a maintenance warehouse, and it's really, uh, a storage facility for RAR equipment and parts. And it's designed to just support the infrastructure that we now have created. And as we point out, at the largest single-site malt production facility in the world. So, it's really just to provide an organized place to take out some of the outside storage that's currently in place, bring it all into one organized footprint. Now, I'm gonna introduce Mr. Larry Paul, who's gonna come up and talk about specifically the Malt House Number Six project itself.
Good evening, councilmembers. I'm actually a RAR employer for 26 years, but more importantly, I'm a neighbor to RAR for the last 37 years. So I only live two blocks away. So everything that goes on at RAR, I see in my backyard, actually in my front yard. So, me and my wife are very interested in what goes on down at the plant. Uh, Malt House Six, as employees of RAR, were really excited to see Malt House Six being built here in the city. They looked all over the country and even in Canada for a site for this particular malt house. But we found that we can actually probably, you know, build that malt house cheaper right here with the infrastructure that we already have. And with all the knowledge base that our employees have, we can run it a lot better here also. So... As Jesse said, that footprint is very, very small. It's right there on Third Street. We had to, um, look hard and fast on that site in order to get a footprint large enough to actually build that malt house. And we had to stack that malt house. It's very unique. There's not one built like it anywhere around. Most of the towers, like we do have a tower down there now, Malt House Number Five, that tower is round, and that's European design. This malt house is basically designed by the employees of RAR. Over the last, I would say, 30 years, RAR has been very instrumental in asking its employees what they thought about the type of equipment they've been running, the types of things they wanted to see, and then a lot of experimentation, and actually know now how to make malt a lot better than before. We've taken all those different attributes and we've put them into one malt house. Uh, this is a view from the south. So, basically, I live a block away from there, and so I'll be looking at that every day. But as you can see, there's a very tall portion that's gonna be the germ steeping portion of the plant. And then, there's a shorter portion, which will be the kilning part of the plant. So it's actually gonna be built, two buildings stacked side by side. Most of you don't know much about malting, but this would be the typical inside of a malt house. The germination beds here are, are put side by side. We don't have that ability to do that on our site. So we've actually taken each bed and we're stacking them one on top of another. So that building will be about 167 feet tall when it's done. Here's a floor detail of that particular malt house. If you look at the left-hand side, the upper floor is a steeping floor. Steeping is considered where we bring the barley into the plant. And we're putting it underwater to start the germination process. We bring that from about 10% moisture in the field up to about 42% in the steeping process. Once that process is done, approximately 40 hours, we're dropping that down into the gold area, which is one of four of the germination beds. And we are applying air and water to actually germinate that. A lot of you who have been in grade school, or your kids bring home those beans, and all of a sudden, the beans grow in the napkin on the windowsill. That's basically what we're doing. We let that root grow out, and that acrospire, or the stem, grow to the length of the kernel. Then, uh, we take it to the kiln. And the kiln then will take that moisture in germination, it gets up to about 48%, we take that moisture down to 4%. And then, those starches that are converted in that kernel, uh, under high temperature, turn, uh, the sugars get caramelized. So we go from starch to sugar and the caramelization, and you get that multi-flavor. But you can see here, that design is, is pretty interesting in that we stack the tower. There's a lot of gravity feed. So we've able to cut our power consumption on a lot of our equipment. Those are things we've brought from other parts of the plant. Okay? Here's a elevation, our perspective drawing on that. You can see that we're not the tallest building at RAR. We are the fourth tallest. The Cota Stack might even be a little bit taller than our building. And then, down below, you can kind of see a shadow drawing, a 3D perspective of how that actually is shadowing one of our other malt houses. So... One of the biggest things is our very restricted footprint. And so, uh, since we only had X number of square feet to put that into, we put a lot of, uh, design function into that plant to get it to sit on that footprint and not try to kind of overtake the neighborhood.
Okay, just to carry on then, the second project we want to talk a little bit about is the BSG Warehouse. And again, that's the, uh, large building, the 8,000-square-foot facility located on the north side of First Avenue. This is an early rendering. Um, it's very early. Just to kind of give an idea of perspective, and it was one where we started to really look at the design elements of the building. And it was from this drawing, which is good. You should always start out with a drawing that I think is not as good as the ones you end up with, but the bottom line is, out of this, we've come up with an idea that we're gonna really try to make the design elements consistent amongst all four of these projects potentially. And I'll show you a little bit on the end that kind of references that. But this is just an early rendering of the warehouse itself. This is, uh, a good picture, I think, of the current conditions. Bottom right hand is really the view that most people would typically see when they look down First Avenue looking west. Um, and then you can see the houses that were, and again, this is about three weeks ago, actually, before the fire department training, the houses that were in place on that site. This is the latest BSG Warehouse site plan. About a week ago, there's a lot of discussion about access to and from the site. And this represents the latest rendition of that. It shows traffic entering the driveway at Pierce, which is right across from the main entrance at RAR, and exiting over on Scott Street. It also shows, uh, kind of accentuated left-hand loop in that exit as you get onto Scott Street, which allows for a wider turning radius to accommodate, uh, traffic and/or parking that would have been on Scott Street. So I think this consists, and it is the latest plan for that site. It also shows the latest rendering. It shows 10 full malt silos. Um, and it shows a full complement of dock doors. So this is our latest version. Didn't change the footprint at all. It's just showing that we can accommodate on the existing site. And it shows the enlarged public, uh, drive exiting over on Scott. This is a detail, and it's a further detail of the internal bagging and palletizing equipment. I mentioned to you before, we have a current function that's being done at Cosoda, Minnesota, where we're manually bagging a lot of product. That was, uh, a process that worked fairly well about three years ago, when we bagged about a truck a week. And now, we are currently bagging to the tune of three to four trucks a day. This plant has the, I say this plant, this facility will have the capability of bagging potentially double that, four to five trucks, could be up to eight trucks a day. But the bottom line is, it's, it represents internally robotic bagging equipment, palletizing equipment, full functional, uh, ability to do all functions kind of at the same time. But it also has the ability to bring in import containers from imported malts. There's a hop storage unit in here, 6,000 square feet of hop storage. It'll serve as the largest distribution center for craft beer in the Midwest. Just more detail, and actually, it just gives you a little bit more of an idea of what that bagging equipment looks like. Threw this in there because most people don't realize what a typical warehouse looks like for us. This is a typical warehouse. It shows pallets packed at, uh, bulk malt of RAR malt stacked a couple high. The current building is gonna be a bit higher than that. It'll allow us to get greater utilization per square foot. Third project I wanted to talk about tonight is the RAR Maintenance Warehouse. Again, I opened this discussion by saying it's the simplest of all those buildings. It's at the corner of Second and Pierce. Um, this is a rendering kind of showing you the before. If you look in the bottom left-hand corner, you realize to the right, we're two neighbors that we've had for a long time, who had various outside storage activities. You can see that in the upper two pictures. And then, we finally were able to purchase that, and again, the bottom right shows the fire department altering the change, the scenery on that landscape quite a bit. This is the rendering from the west, showing you what that building would look like. And again, as I show you these buildings, remember that we're still incorporating a common design, which means that in elements where there are precast elements used, we'll bring those all back and show those to be some common link between this building, the BSG Warehouse, and the Tech Center. Another rendering from a couple different elevation views. The final, uh, project I wanted to talk about is the Tech Center and Brewery. This is, again, another early rendering. This is not the rendering we're going with. We're still refining that. But it's kind of showing you a little bit of you. This is, this is kind of showing it from, um, from the west, or from the east, I'm sorry. This is the current status today, if you went down there. It's the CH Carpenter Lumber Company. A couple different views, um, from different perspectives. The thing it does show you is that the lower elevation that accommodates the Pilot Brewery will be elevated in floor height. We're looking again as, potentially up to 18 feet tall. The upper elevation will be a standard height. It'll accommodate the Tech Center, which is currently over on Third Avenue. For those of you who haven't witnessed the craft brewery development, this is a typical craft brewery. This would be of the size that we would be looking at installing at this site. Another view from another perspective. Again, that's a German-supplied brewery unit. And then, I threw this slide in there just to show you, the Tech Center that we always talk about is currently in place at RAR. It's over on Third Avenue, Third and Pierce. And it occupies the entire upper level and the lower level of the laboratory building. And this kind of gives you an idea of the sophistication of the instrumentation that's currently in place. When we're done, this Tech Center will have the greatest capability for analysis of either beer or malt in any facility in the country. I throw this slide in there again. It's the one that I get asked to show most often. And it's really designed to show you that we do have a plan for the west end of town. It's a plan that will incorporate, as I said, design elements to make the buildings on the left, the Tech Center, look like it's part of the campus with the building on the right, the BSG Warehouse, and the other components to this project. It's a different approach than we've had in the past. And, uh, it's one I think is gonna kind of go and build on the fact that we did that. For those of you who historically visited RAR, this consisted of two buildings. The section on your left and right were two separate buildings. We connected those, and we created internally a boardroom and a beer stew that serves our current craft customers. But it really, I think, again, it showed that we have the ability to do good design when we need to. And that's kind of the basic element that we're gonna take forward into the other buildings that we're talking about in this project. What I want to do now is have Imogene Bass come up, and she was the person who was entrusted with putting together our application for the TIF. And we want to talk about some of the economic impacts. And we'll get through those, and then we'll, uh, we'll probably have, we just have some more information we want to provide you on RAR and the community itself. So, I'll turn it over to Imogene.
Hi, Imogene Bass, like Jess said, and I'm just gonna talk a little bit about the economic impact of what we're doing. Basically, this is the largest capital outlay that RAR has done in 20 years. It's looking at about 68 million total for the four projects. As Jess mentioned earlier, this is our first new malt production by RAR in 21 years. So it's not very often that a malt house is built. As you guys know, it's a very capital-intensive project, and you just don't put one up overnight. However, the average span of a malt house is 80 to 100 years, so once you build it, it's there to stay, and you do your best to utilize it for all 80 to 100 years. The BSG Warehouse and Processing Facility will be the largest, most automated distribution center to the craft brewers in the US, which Jess kind of touched on already. And, um, the Tech Center will also further establish Shakopee as a technical resource for the craft brewers in the Midwest. So, economic impact jobs. RAR currently employs 154 full-time employees at its Shakopee site. This is over $16 million in annual payroll. This project not only creates jobs, but it definitely solidifies and makes all of our jobs more secure moving forward. With this project, we anticipate 28 additional full-time positions created. And we would say this is a conservative number. We really were looking at staffing for the four additional buildings. It doesn't really count additional accounting staff that would be needed due to growth or other auxiliary positions that would be created as a result of this growth. So we think it's a conservative estimate. And then, the other thing is the positions and skills needed for these positions really do vary. So we'll be hiring a wide variety of different people. Maintenance, malt production, administrative, warehouse staff, quality and inventory control, technical people. So, a wide variety of jobs created at RAR with this project. Economic impact, our property taxes. So currently, um, $850,000 was paid to, in 2014, for property taxes for parcels owned by RAR in Shakopee. So we already contribute a fair amount. We've contributed over $3 million over the past four years. This project is expected to increase property taxes by about $200,000 annually once they're up and running, based on for all the projects. And RAR has been one of the top property tax contributors here in Scott County since it built its first malt house in 1936. So we've been around a while. We've been contributing for a long time. In addition to the jobs that we're creating, we also will have an impact on during the construction. So obviously, the jobs are a long-term impact, construction over the next couple of years, but, um... A lot of the equipment is sourced and fabricated a lot in Minnesota, Wisconsin, and Iowa. So those are a lot of local impacts. The steep tanks actually come from Jordan, Minnesota. The germ machines, is that correct? The germination machines are from Winona, Minnesota. Precast panels from Savage, Minnesota, so we are sourcing a lot locally where we can. This equipment could have been done from Germany or China, and we're, again, doing it locally where we can. We consider our in-house design coupled with quality local manufacturing to period deployment of evolutionary malting technology. Quite a sentence. Also, a lot of our contractors are local, so we've got, um, our three main contractors working on the warehouses, the Tech Center, and the malt house are all based in Minnesota. So they'll be hiring people locally and all those types of jobs. And I think that's it for economic impact. Yeah?
I just threw in a couple slides, just again to emphasize, we're not sure of this. We can't really find the fact on this one, but we think it's fact. Since the construction in 1935, um, as I, I think I've indicated before, I think construction on the first malt house started in April of 1935. Malt house opened in 1936, so if we break around in April this year, we'll, 80 years almost to the month, that would be putting in the new capacity. But I think we are Shakopee's oldest industry. A little bit about the plant itself. People don't realize, again, that at 24 million bushels of annual capacity, it's currently the second-largest production site in the world. We say that in capacity. The reality is that our competitor, who is a multinational, by the way, located in North Dakota, has more production capacity. But we are the ones who are sold out. And we're sold out because we've got excellent relationships with the top brewers. The large, what we call adjunct brewers, but in addition to that, we're the number-one supplier to the craft industry. We've attained that position because we've done process innovations at our site that are considered to be the industry standards. And that's all been done through the work of our employees. Again, there's five malt houses currently at Shakopee. First one, 1935 construction, the last one built in 1994. And then, this will be malt house number six. We have 154 full-time employees and growing. One thing that Imogene didn't point out is that Brewer Supply Group with our headquarters in Shakopee, we have added about a job and a half a month since the, uh, office building was built two years ago. And those aren't jobs that we're claiming as part of this development. It's important to note too that in the last 15 years, that the headquarters for both the RAR Corporation and the Brewer Supply Group have all been moved to Shakopee. Originally, we had offices at the Grand Exchange, and those were all closed. And now, RAR Shakopee is the corporate office and headquarters. I'm gonna turn this over now to a couple other guys who are gonna come up and talk a little bit about RAR and the community in terms of philanthropic giving and, uh, community service.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mike Bemis. I'm a lifelong resident of Shakopee and a 36-year employee of RAR. And, uh, I'm happy to be there. They've done well for us. As you can see, they're a leader in the philanthropic aspect with both the community, the county, and the state. They give annually over $200,000 philanthropically and, uh, another $185,000 through their, uh, corporation and through their, uh, their other groups. They've been, as you can see, they've been key, uh, contributors to both the St. Francis Hospital, the original hospital, the hospital up by, the St. Francis Hospital up by Target, now they're addition. The Shakopee Public Schools through the whole gamut of their, uh, their building. And a major contributor, the fire department, both with the facilities, their equipment, and then their training. Which one do I, I'm sorry? All right. Here's some of the community sponsorships and donations at RAR. And this by no means is an all-inclusive list. It's just one we put together. Again, like I mentioned, there's St. Francis Hospital, of course, they're a major contributor there. And that's not just a one-time contributor, but it's annually, they are contributing money towards their programs. Same thing with the Shakopee Fire Department. Providing training, as you saw in some of Jess's slides earlier. The burning of the houses down by RAR, they provided training. And that was not only for Shakopee, but, uh, Tim can touch on that, but there was like four or five other fire departments involved in that. or five other fire departments involved in that. The Shakopee Library Smart Place Spot Learning Center is a great thing for learning for young children and adults. We are all active, both in the Shakopee Chamber of Commerce, we have active members that are employed at RAR. We sponsor programs and donate to the YMCA. And Shakopee Schools, we are constantly and continually donating there. We are a major contributor in that environmental center that they just built up there. The Scott County Historical Society, a major contributor there. Dollars for Scholars program, annually, we contribute scholarships for needy students through the Shakopee Dollars for Scholars. We also have our own college scholarship plan, where we provide two scholarships, an average of two scholarships a year, at $3,000 a year for the full four years, to two needy students. We have a summer student work program there, where we provide employment for, it started out to be employment for children of employees that work there. They could have a summer job that makes great, good wages for, to help pay for their schooling, and we've expanded that a little bit to, we've hired some more people that are needy that wanna have a good-time job. Christmas in May program, we are a leading founder there, and we not only provided workers for that, but we also provided the monetary will to sponsor a home, to pay for all the supplies and necessary things to upgrade that home for the Christmas in May program. And of course, we are key contributors to very many numerous civic organizations, Lions Club, Rotary Club, et cetera.
My name is Tim Dirks, and I've been an employee of RAR for 39 years. And just a chance for us to kind of beat our drum here a little bit and talk about some of the other things that we're involved in. As you can see, we are involved in a lot of the projects in town. Several people in the room here are members and are members of the Dollars for Scholars, board of directors there. We've all been involved in different committees out at the Saks School, different members of that. We've been part of the derby days over the years, graduation party, and a long list of everything is there for you to read, and I won't bore you with that, but kinda wanted to stress that we are involved in the community and want to continue to be a big part of the community. Thank you.
This is the last slide that they were supposed to show, relative to donations. One of the most popular donations we ever made, actually. What we did is, we made available to the fire department, and actually, the police department had done some training also, but we use this, this isn't a single example. The reality is, we've had a very, very long relationship with the fire department that goes all the way back to the '70s, when we contributed heavily to the purchase of a new ladder truck. We thought that was a good idea, 'cause we had tall structures, and we thought that would help out, but we've had a historic relationship with the fire department that goes beyond the norm, and that is because we have, in this site, the potential for fire. But we do a lot of training. The fire department practices repelling and things like that on our site. It's been a great relationship. I'm gonna conclude with two slides, I think, and they are really just kind of, to kind of summarize where we're at, I think. And that is, you know, why are we here and why are we asking for consideration? And to that, I had just two bullets. Number one is that the cost to build here is more expensive. When Larry talked a little bit about malt house number six, he mentioned that this normal footprint would be one where the germination boxes would be spread out over a wide, wide base, and with that, we really don't have that option. As Larry said, the only place where we could kind of pinhook that thing in was over on Third Avenue. To do that, we had to come up with a novel design. This is a novel design. This is a malt house that hasn't been built. It really does go back, as was alluded to, it really builds on 40 years of internal experience that we've got with process development, and an idea about construction that we think we know as much as the Germans. We think we know a lot more than the Chinese with regard to building malt houses, and the reality is that it's a bit of a risk, but that cost to go up is probably a couple million-dollar negative. If we were gonna build this in Canada, we would build the same malt house, only it would be flat. We wouldn't stack it. And there's a couple million dollars associated with that, and those aren't things that the city's responsible for. It's the fact that if we're gonna build here, we have to figure out how to make it work. The other thing we've got, though, is that we've got the electrical, gas, and there's other utility reconfigurations, and a lot of you have been aware of those things as we've gone through these projects. We've been working on this now collectively, and I want to point out again that with city staff, and with great support from city staff, we have worked through a number of issues with regard to how we get rid of the overhead utility lines, for example, over the BSG warehouse facility, how we handle the stormwater management issues on a very tight location and spot, and how we do everything from highway access, which has been a big issue. But in the end, those things are locally driven, and they tend to have driven the cost of the project up significantly, and in doing that, it's made it more expensive to build here. There's no doubt about it. Part of it is, too, we talked a little bit about the BSG site, the fact that we've chosen to put the warehouse there. From a basic geometry standpoint, it would've been better to probably build somebody else, somewhere else with more of a square warehouse, but we've got a long rectangular one, but we think it'll work. But it's gonna be more expensive per square foot to build that, but it's a decision we've made. The other thing that you need to be aware of is that, and I think you do know that, but operating costs here will be higher. Our wage structure right now, with our union workforce within the malting units, we pay the highest wages of any of our competitors in the country. And we've got two guys here from the union, and they can tell ya, the first thing we tell people when we start negotiations every three years, is we're gonna be there. We're gonna be the top wage provider of all of our competition, because we think our employees are that much better. And that's reflected here, but also, it's reflected in the fact that, obviously, we could build this in Chicago, we could build the warehouse, for example, in Chicago, we could build that warehouse in Cosota, for that matter, we could rebuild there, and those wages would be lower. We know we're gonna pay higher wages. We know ultimately, because of that, this probably isn't the most freight-logical place to be, but as Larry Paul talked about, there's synergies we think we have here. We have an excellent management group that we think we can manage a BSG warehouse facility better than if it was built in Chicago. And that's why we're gonna build here, but those things all do make this site a little more expensive. In closing, a couple of the key points, again, I point out, you know it, you've heard it many times, we've been here for 80 years. We've really been here longer than anyone, we believe, from an industrial entity. This project really does further stabilize the existing jobs at this site. Part of what I wanted to demonstrate tonight, by having a great group of people here with me, is, again, over 217 years of experience in this group, this small group. This is a, this is a project that will further stabilize those jobs. Again, we've never asked for any financial consideration before. Obviously, other new companies coming into the area have, and have been given that. The challenge we've got is that we've got competitors who are, in fact, receiving incentives at their locales. We've got incentives that have been offered us to build in Alberta. We've got incentives that have been offered for us to build in Saskatchewan. What we're really saying is, any assistance that we get with regard to this application is really meant to level the playing field. It's not to give us a huge advantage, and it won't, but it's simply gonna help level the playing field and to counter some of those costs that we incur here, not all of them, but some of those costs to make it more feasible to build here. Okay? And that's it.
I have one question.
Let's let Sam get through first, and then...
My PowerPoint is, it's gonna be a tough one after watching that. They did a great job. We'll see how I do, though. I feel like we should have a drum roll. So as I said tonight, during this public hearing, you're being asked to establish the Tax Incentive Financing District Number 16. If approved, the city would create an economic development TIF. There was some talk that this could have potentially been a redevelopment TIF, based on some of the things that were done here, but unfortunately, there's some challenges with redevelopment about making sure it was slumming blight and figuring out redevelopment costs, so instead of going that route, instead, we went to the economic development route. To go economic development TIF, you have to have a manufacturing, warehouse, distribution, which is all of what RAR has. The purpose of the TIF will go to fund any public infrastructure. There's questions about what could be considered public infrastructure. Acquiring the sites across the road would be considered in public infrastructure, building the stormwater ponds, building any retention walls, creating the roads, even going upwards, the actual building of the manufacturing facility and the warehouse over there could be considered as part of the TIF. RAR has stated that this would not happen but for getting the assistance from the city of Shakopee. This will be a pay-as-you-go note. Basically, the developer will pay for it, as they pay their taxes, we'll be reimbursing them the share of the city, county, and the school district. The total project cost is $68.3 million. There'll be 28 new full-time equivalent positions. The lowest base wage is $16.20. I just want to point out, as Imogene said, this could change. Right now, these are the jobs that they are projecting, but that's always a tough thing when you're building new things that you haven't built before. So we will ask in their contract that they pay no less than $14.50, as what is our business subsidy policy. The average wage will be around $20 an hour. As you've seen in the past, we've asked greater MSP to do an impact study. This is the highest impact study that has ever come back by far. For every one job created by RAR, 6.5 jobs will be created elsewhere within our economy here in the Twin Cities metro. I believe the highest one that we had before was 1.7, so you can see, this is quite a bit more. We did use our score sheet for the first time this time as well. They did get a score of 625 out of possible 650. Some of the costs that we have and how the TIF plan breaks down is, RAR would get approximately 97% of the TIF generated, which is around $1.8 million. Approximately 3% will be saved for administrative costs, those will be over the next nine years. We'll be paying people like Springsteen to do our TIF plant, or to do our TIF reports to the state. The state of Minnesota also charges admin fees, which are $7,000, so the total TIF that would be generated and the total TIF amount would be $1.9 million over nine years. And I also threw in some of my pictures, I know how you love my pictures, so here's some of my pictures of the district, kind of the befores, and we'll go back and take some afters. Do you have any questions of staff? Or of RAR?
Justice Lehman.
I have one of each. The first one for RAR, you answered most of the questions I had on that, but from a fire standpoint, does the new construction projects design different than the existing structures from a fire safety standpoint?
Well, if we break it down by individual sites, the BSG warehouse will be fully sprinkled, as will, I believe, the tech center and the RAR warehouse. In the malt house itself, again, what we have is, we have a slipform concrete structure, and that structure provides a firewall, basically, that meets the standard or actually exceeds it. I'm gonna reach back here and ask Mike York, our engineer, but Mike, the actual thickness of the concrete wall on the slipform is gonna be?
Eight inches.
Eight inches, so that does provide a different, quite an adequate fire barrier. The other thing is, and you don't see it in detail, is that we offset the current building, malt house number six, there is a gap between that and the existing malt house number three, and we did that to make sure that we had correct fire ratings between the two buildings themselves. So in answer to your question, I believe we're gonna have adequate, and the actual new malt house will have to be built to new building codes, so there are additional considerations for fire protection in there. And we've already met with Tom Pitch Schneider, the fire marshal, and I've worked through their first kind of blush on any questions that that new code might bring.
Any other question?
The other one was for staff. So there's roughly $200,000 a year in taxes generated from the project. If I'm understanding you right, we're basically taking that $200,000 a year and giving it back to them through a TIF?
So it's actually gonna be a higher generation than that, because when you look at the TIF structure, you don't include the fiscal disparities or the state of Minnesota's taxes or any special taxing districts. So if the school were to pass a referendum, RAR would still be required to pay the referendum amount. So the amount that we were talking about being generated, that $200,000, is the school's initial money, the city's money, and the county's money. So the state would still get theirs, fiscal disparities would still get theirs, everybody else would continue, and they would still get the taxes on what they have right now. So they would still be paying us any taxes that they're paying on what they have right now, it's just the increment of what's generated.
But any new expansion of city staff in the next nine years, RAR will not participate in paying for that.
So you're talking about the new building, so malt house six?
Right.
Exactly, and they won't pay the city, the county, the school district, but they'll still pay the state of Minnesota, they'll still pay fiscal disparities, and they will still pay, if a referendum passes, I think right now, we currently have a referendum that was helping to pay for Fire Station Two, they would continue to pay that. It's, they don't get out of any special taxing districts.
Has there been any consideration of a percentage of 50 or 70% to where the city actually gets some new revenue over the course of the next nine, 10 years to offset some of the cost of additional staff as the city builds up?
The recommendation that we are making to you is that you offer them the 97%, 3% for admin, 97% for them. We know it, as we've been working through this with RAR, we have seen the increase of costs. Some of these have been that extra road to build the stormwater ponds are very expensive. That's one of the reasons that when they do a redevelopment, they sometimes will offer a 20-year redevelopment note, because the cost of redeveloping is so much more than green space building. The other issue is, when you develop in a small, compact space like this, that does raise those costs. So those are things that, as city staff, we realize the extra costs being associated to them, that's why, that was our recommendation. You, as council and the EDA, could choose to offer them a lesser amount, but the total amount being generated is that $1.9 million. And I did want to tell you as well that you may see this back in the future, should you choose to accept the TIF plan, it may come back to you once in the future. As we were putting together the parcel IDs for this, this is a very challenging area because there are so many different parcel IDs. So I believe the top 13 that we have on the TIF plan are accurate, because that was just replatted, is Lot 1, Block 1, RAR first edition. But when you come back, then, to the south side, we have nine additional parcels where those PIDs are accurate, but the legal descriptions, we may need to update this. So I did want to give you a heads up, if you do see this again down the road, hopefully it would just be a consent item, or we would update those legal descriptions.
Justice Wadding.
This would be for Mr. Tyson, excuse me. He had talked about the Tap Room, or the Pilot Brewery, as kind of a test facility, and that doesn't include the idea of having a Tap Room or that kind of facility, it's just to test out the new products, right?
It is, it is exactly that. There is no Tap Room Plan for the public. Now, if that changes your vote, we could reconsider.
I think it's a great idea, but I just wanted to make it clear for the public. I think I knew the answer, but I wanted to make sure.
Currently, it's, you know, the thing would be that, part of the service that it would provide, too, is it would allow craft brewers to come in and actually use the facility to mimic a brewer that they might wanna try. And the challenge we'll have is that we will have beer that will not necessarily have to go through the whole process, and that's, if you look at the throughput of the testing procedures, a lot of the things that have to be tested won't require them to go to recreate full-fledged beer.
I know a few people that would probably help out with some of the mistakes. Thank you.
Further questions before we open it up to the public? Justice Lewis?
Not really a question, just a comment. You've been a great part of the company, you've been my great partner. As long as I've been here, I've been here all my life. I hope it continues. I'm fully behind it, I've got a lot of other comments that I was gonna make, but you know what? Let's get this thing done.
Anything else from council and questions? All right, this is a public hearing, so if there's anybody from the audience who'd like to speak on the item that is before us right now?
Mr. Mayor. Just for the record, the public hearing right now is both for the city council and the EDA, all of the mayors taking the lead here. It is for both bodies at the same time, so if you have any comments to either body, this is the time to make them.
Thank you, sir. Anyone like to speak? Yes, sir.
Greetings, members of council and mayor. My name is Jordan Olson, I live at 249 Mount Street. I just want to tell you guys, in the city of Shakopee, I think... I just want to tell you guys, in the city of Shakopee, I think this is an excellent idea, and I think that, it seems to me that RAR's been a little frustrated with all the things they've had to go through. And of all the companies that I've seen come through this room in the last three and a half years of council meetings, coming here and watching you guys, I don't think I've seen any company, except for RAR here, care so much about their neighbors. They are Shakopee, they've been here a long time, and I just implore you to accept RAR's proposal. That's all.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? All right. President Mokel, if you want to close the EDA public hearing?
I will accept a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Second?
Tag it.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes.
All right, now I need a motion to close the city's public hearing. Councilman Lehman?
Motion to close the city's public hearing.
Councilman Mokel?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Passes unanimously. Councilman Lehman?
Mayor, I'm going to tell you the problem that I have, and it's not pointed at RAR. The problem I have is that we're doing all this commercial industrial development in Shakopee, and we're not receiving new tax dollars, and any expansion that Shakopee does on staffing or equipment or anything else is being totally absorbed by the existing business base and the existing residential base, which is putting a burden on them. Now, I don't agree with some of the past things that we've done as far as tax abatement at TIF, and I don't really agree with this one either, because there is no new tax revenue coming out of the project for Shakopee for added fire guys or whatever. However, if a guy's going to make an exception, it would be for a business that has been here from day one and is Shakopee, which RAR is. I like RAR. I appreciate all they do for the community. I will probably support this, but I do have my concerns of the overall manner and where we're going here as a city, and it's going to have an impact. It's, we're already seeing it, and it's just unfortunate.
Councilman Lewis?
I wish your project was bigger so we could give you more money, because I'm tired of dealing with these outside companies. I've really had enough of them. They come in demanding. You're not demanding, you've been giving. If we need something in the future, I'm sure we can count on you. That's it.
Councilman Whiting?
You know, you look at this project with, for every job RAR creates, it's going to have an impact of, was it six-point-five jobs? The wage range that RAR pays its employees is a healthy, decent wage where people could make a living and not have to run off to their part-time job after work. There's a high cost associated with developing that site. Company's been here for eighty years, continuous support for local service projects and nonprofits, and they're building for the future. You don't put up a building that's going to last a hundred years to walk out on a TIF that's going to last nine years, so I support this project.
Councilman Mokel?
I too. I support this project. I think that you have been partners in this community. I know a few of you outside of here from activities and things that you've done for this community, and I just appreciate that you picked Shakopee to do this project.
Councilman Lewis?
I would like to make, to make a motion to call the vote with exception. If you want to make a comment, other than that, call the vote.
Okay.
Hold on just a moment. Mr. Thompson?
Just so we're clear, the EDA should act first.
Yes. And I need a resolution for fifteen-five first. If anybody wants to make the motion? Mr. Whiting?
I'd like a motion to adopt Resolution Fifteen-Five, a resolution approving tax increment financing plan for tax increment financing, District Number Sixteen, and a modified redevelopment plan for the Minnesota River Valley Housing and Redevelopment Project Number One.
Second.
And second by Mr. Lewis. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes four to zero. And can I get a resolution number fifteen-four?
Sorry, I don't have it in front of me, or else I would do it.
I'm like, you never do one.
I said fifteen-five.
All right, fifteen-four.
This is your tab key.
Make a motion for resolution approving a contract for private development with the city of Shakopee and RAR Corporation, and awarding the sale of and providing the forms, terms, covenants, and directions for the issuance of its tax increment revenue note, Series Twenty-Fifteen, and the original aggregate principal amount of one million eight-hundred-and-eighty-three-thousand-eighty-six dollars.
And do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes four to zero. No? Or five to zero?
You've signed it, too.
Sorry. I can't count today. So then I need a motion to adjourn the EDA.
Motion to adjourn.
Before we adjourn, can we correct the record on the first vote of the EDA, which was said to pass on a four to zero? That was also a five to zero vote.
Okay.
Second the motion to adjourn.
So clearly, the motion to adjourn is to adjourn Tuesday, April twenty-first at seven PM.
Correct.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes.
How many?
Five.
All right, now we, EDA is adjourned. Now we're going to move to the city council portion of this, so we need first, any comments or anything like that from council? Didn't think so. We need number seventy-five-sixty-eight is the first motion we need. Councilman Whiting?
I'd make a motion to approve Resolution Number Seventy-Five-Sixty-Eight, a resolution approving tax increment financing plan for tax increment financing for the Economic Development District Number Sixteen, and a modified redevelopment plan for the Minnesota River Valley Housing and Redevelopment Project Number One.
Second.
Standing by Councilman Lewis. Discussion, Councilman Lehman?
Is this the time where we talk about free beer for the next couple of years?
Just the mistakes is the answer. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously, and now we need seventy-five-sixty-seven. Councilman Mokel?
I will make Resolution Number Seventy-Five-Sixty-Seven, a resolution approving contract for private development with the Economic Development Authority for the city of Shakopee and RAR Corporation, including a business subsidy agreement.
Second.
Second by Councilman Lewis. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you very much for everything you guys do for Shakopee, and we're good from here. So thank you for being here and all your work and your investment here in town. We appreciate it. All right. Does anybody need a break? Are we good?
Do I say yes?
Motion for a seven-minute break.
Second.
Motion, second for a seven-minute break. All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Passes unanimously.
Two Point O Feasibility Study Review. Just so everybody knows, this is going to be, by and large, informational portion tonight. I don't think we'll have a ton of discussion, depending on how everything goes, and if we want to talk about things, we certainly can. But it's mostly just absorbing the information as it comes in, and we'll decide what next steps are and how we want to handle those discussions as it goes as a body. So, Ms. Polly?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We're here tonight to give you the information gathered by our two consultants that we hired to do the Community Center Two Point O feasibility study. As you recall, on December second of this last year, the city council approved us going forward with hiring two consultants to do the study. One of the consultants was Ballard and King, with Mr. Jeff King is here tonight to make that presentation. They did the feasibility study, market analysis, and operational per forma based on the architectural pieces. And then we also hired Two-Nine-Two Design Group, which Mr. Tom Betty is here tonight to make the presentation on the architecture's textual behalf of what came out of the programming per forma, and a little bit about the information that you received on January third with the ice sheets and how we repurposed the community center. So as you'll recall, the Community Center Two Point O project included looking at a second sheet of ice, increased fitness facility, an indoor aquatic park, indoor playground, and a covered turf facility, as well as the flow and the operations of the facility with these additions. Then on December, or Janu-, I keep saying January and December, that's not right, I'm sorry, March third, we came back to you with the first part of that, which was the ice arena portion, which Two-Nine-Two Design Group was asked to currently look at the existing sheet that we have and how we fix it and adding on to that facility versus building new. So on March third, you gave us the direction to continue with the lines of looking at a new two-sheet facility and repurposing, repurposing the existing sheet. So that's where we're at today, and that's where the feasibility study and the architectural studies have all come together with their final analysis. So I am going to actually turn this over to both of our consultants, Mr. Jeff King and Tom Betty, to give you an overall project feasibility outcome and what, where we can take this information from there. Then as staff, we're asking that you take this information and provide us direction on how to proceed and what components we may want to look into as we move into the future. But after this presentation, we'll also talk about different financing options, so there's a couple pieces to this as well.
Thanks, Jamie. I'm Jeff King with Ballard King and Associates, and with me tonight is my brother, Tom Betty. He didn't get the email about what color pants to wear, but we have had the fortune of working with Tom a long, long time, and although we were hired independently of this, in this project, we have a long history with working with Two-Nine-Two. Just from a protocol... Just from a protocol standpoint, Mayor, during the work session, do we have to sign in?
No, you're fine.
Okay, thank you. And that is a tough act to follow after the, the folks here, especially the brewery sound awful, awful good right about now. It's been a long day. So without further ado, I wanted to provide for council tonight just a brief summary of some of our key findings as we went through the feasibility study that Jamie highlighted. And I want to talk first about the market analysis piece that, that we completed. For us, when we do market analysis, it's usually three components that are part of that market analysis. One is data and statistics, demographics that, that we, we draw from. That's one of the legs of our marketing analysis. Another part of that is who, taking a look at who else is in the area providing recreation, leisure and sport opportunities. And last but not least, and certainly the most important aspect of market analysis work is listening to your constituents, listening to stakeholders, gathering information from the folks that are using facilities. So we gather an understanding of what is driving the need for some of the facilities that are part of this, this plan. So it, for us, it always starts with the development of a service area. We, we looked at two different service areas, obviously the city of Shakopee was one of those service areas and then we extended out beyond the city to, to take a look at what the population and demographics were of those areas. So to start to focus on some of the key findings, I mean, one of the elements we looked at was median age. And you can see by this table, when you look at the city of Shakopee significantly younger than both the state of Minnesota and also the national level. So that would certainly suggest lots of families and, and younger people in your community. We also roll in household income, median household income. And, and this particular slide, again, these demographics, I might add, are all driven from the, the maps. So one of the maps was the city of Shakopee and this other was that secondary service area. So it's, it's extracted from those service areas. But you see the house, median household income is significantly higher than, again, both the state of Minnesota and the, the national level. A couple other aspects that's not on the slide that I wanted to highlight. For the city of Shakopee, we found that 75% of your households have income of $50,000 or greater. And to put that in some perspective, on a national level, it's about 52%. And on the other side of the spectrum, households with income of under $25,000, that percentage for Shakopee is 9% and on a national level, it's closer to 24%, so significantly lower. So I think that, you know, on, on the surface, when you're talking about recreation, leisure and sports facilities, certainly age and income are two determining factors that drive participation. And in this particular case, both of those elements are very favorable for the city of Shakopee. So we can't talk about household income without having some reference to, and I, I don't want to confuse this with cost of living, but just an idea of what housing and dwellings cost. And, and this is referred to as a spending potential index and for the city of Shakopee, it's, it's 140. To put this in perspective for you, 100 would be the benchmark in the US. So you could say that, you know, housing dwelling costs are about 40% higher here than what you'd find on a national level. But I do want to point out, one other aspect is going back to household income. Your income household, median household income is 45% higher than, than the national level. So again, from our perspective, just, you know, not having any bias one way or the other, it certainly looks like there's ample discretionary income to continue to support recreation, leisure and sport activities in, in the city. So moving on, beyond some of the demographic findings, we, we also overlay statistical data and, and this information comes from us from the National Sporting Goods Association. It does extensive survey work every year. And typically, there are four different categories that they look at participation from. One of the categories is based on age, one of the categories is income, one is the region of the country and the other is what's occurring on a national basis. For our purposes, we just average those four. So the, the top line item on the table you're looking at for aerobics, it's 16.1% when, when we average out those four characteristics. And so what this starts to project for us is what the participation estimates are for these various activities that could take place in, in a leisure, recreation or sports facility. Now what we're not saying is that if you build this facility based on 2014 population, what we're, what we're not saying is that you're gonna get 10,251 people showing up for aerobic program. What that, and what this, what this tells us is this is how many people are participating in that activity locally. And we have to take into account where else people are going for that activity, including the number of people that will do that type of exercise in the privacy of their home. Okay? But again, we've provided a list of activities. Again, we weren't trying to presume anything with this other than providing you the activities that, that could take place in, in the facilities that you're, you're considering. In addition to that, we provided a, a national ranking. So you can see the rank order, the second column going to the right, the national rankings, gives you some indication of how these activities rank on a national level and the number of participants in millions that participate in those activities. And we included what, what we refer to as a primary service area, that would be for the city of Shakopee. And that's just a rank order, again, of these activities, of how they rank order 1 through 20 based on their popularity. We recognize that many community centers are more than just a active recreation and sports facility. There is a passive side that is often included. So we did provide for you and that, and that content of our full report, information from the National Endowment of the Arts. Now, they don't do their surveys as frequently as what the National Sporting Goods Association does. So that's why you see some of this stuff might look a little dated, but that's the most recent information that we have from National Endowment of the Arts, which starts, again, to, to identify the percentage of your population that's participating in these various forms of arts, performing arts and, and visual arts. One, one last slide I wanted to share with you addresses activity trends. And so we took a look over the last 10 years of what's happening with these various activities and how, how participation has increased or decreased over that time. And of course, that's no guarantee of what, what you're gonna see, but oftentimes, the past 10 years is a good indication of what, what trending is occurring within each program. So we provided that for your benefit as well. As I mentioned, another aspect of our, of our work included taking a look at some of the alternative service providers. In his particular case, we actually met with members from the YMCA and, and from the school district. But obviously, there's a number of service providers in and around the Shakopee area that as we move forward to build the operating plan or the pro forma, took that into consideration in terms of market penetration and, and admission rates and, and volume of business that would be achieved from your service area. And lastly, we talked about the third leg being the, the public engagement. This is a listing of some of the different groups that we met with over the course of, what was it, Jamie, three days? That we had a number of stakeholder meetings scheduled that came in and provided us input in, into this process. So what we did at that, at this point was took all of this information, you know, the, the statistical data and the demographic information, the alternative service providers and what we're hearing from the stakeholders, and developed what we refer to as a program recommendation. Our firm, we are not architects or engineers. We're, we're involved more in the operation, planning and consulting of those facilities. So we established this as a starting point for the design piece of this project team to move forward with conceptual planning and ultimately coming up with some project cost estimates for you. And at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Tom.
Mayor, council, glad to be back. So, you know, back on March 3rd, we were given some direction and we used that as a starting point to develop based off of Jeff's program. And I'm gonna use a pointer here, if you look at this program right here, that's the same slide as the last one. So Jeff provides this, we take his program and then we kind of add to it. We need to break it down. There's, he indicates support spaces, a big round number. All support spaces means storage for a building, you have mechanical spaces, you have to take into account, you know, the area that walls take up, hallways, all that stuff. So that's our starting point and then we generate this program. And we developed that program for both the two-sheet ice facility and the repurposing of the existing ice arena and the whole community center itself. So with that, we developed this two-sheet concept and this is-
Could you use the mouse, the pointer on the mouse?
Sure.
For us, thank you. That way, everybody at home can see it and that way, I don't have to worry about the pillar that's right there.
Oh, okay, I got it. So with this, we developed the two-sheet ice arena concept and we're just given kind of a generic site. We don't have a site for it yet, but, you know, how big of a site would we need? What we did is we anticipated we'd build a lot for 150 cars, which we showed out front here. You know, you need access drives, you need to get around this building to service it and so on. And one of the main reasons for doing that is we have a cost estimator working on this. So they need something to base, you know, site work off of and so on. So when they put their estimates together, they kind of took this area that's all in gray, right here, the gray roads around it, the 150 parking stalls and then the development of the area for the ice arena. So it's a tool not only to see how much land you need, but also to help on a cost estimating exercise. This is the main level plan and you can look at it in detail. The big thing is when we're doing a feasibility study, is trying to set that, that scope. How, how big would this facility be? At the end of day, two-sheet facility like this with team rooms to support both for tournament activities, varsity locker rooms, visiting varsity locker rooms, your mechanicals, your, you know, toilet facilities, circulation you need. The main ice sheet is the one on the left. We have seating for 850 people in that. And then the ice sheet, what we call Rank 2 on the right, has a seating capacity of about 300 people. And the center core is all your team room, so access to both sides. I think one other thing to, to look at, I think it's important when we, you know, even early on planning these facilities, is how, how could this facility expand in the future? So this two-sheet concept is set up to allow for easy expansion either to the left or the right, dependent on the site and so on. So, so there's ability for this to grow with the community. And this could be, you know, we're showing an ice sheet, it could be more gymnasium space, it could be whatever in the future. This is the upper level plan. So right here, you see the, the light blue, that's the seating. The yellow is always the circulation. This blue, big rectangular block, that's the dry land training center. There was a, talk about that in the programming stages. The orange are multipurpose meeting rooms. We planned these with the idea that they could expand or contract, so you could have three rooms, one larger room, one smaller, one large room all itself. And then we also had some additional restroom facilities up above. Really, that, that, that count and size of restrooms gets dictated by code and how many people are in it. So I think this is a, you know, a good solid plan to help kind of develop a, a, a good plan to do cost estimating off of and make sure we have all the components covered, which we feel we've, we've covered them all. May tweak something here or there, but this was the type of drawing that was given to the cost estimator. Now, when I was here back March 3rd, we, I kind of had this real crude, single line drawing of, you know, how could we repurpose the existing ice arena? And to, for orientation sake, main entry right here with the bigger red arrow, this is where the existing ice arena was at, right here is the existing gymnasium space. So this is a concept plan on how we could take Jeff's program, incorporate it into this building and cover all of the components. So we looked at coming in through the front entry. This is, you know, kind of the current administrative offices. We showed a little expansion here, taking over one of the meeting rooms. Few reasons, there's potential for more meeting rooms at the ice arena also. We've, we're able to capture some space downstairs to help with that. The yellow areas here, multipurpose room, also could serve as a birthday party room. This area right in here is the current, current fitness area. So this is where we infill a floor to get more usable square footage. And on this one, we looked at moving the teen and senior center into that component. So when you come in the front door, you're right there, spot on to it. And then to the right is walking into the building, we have the childcare facility. So people could come in, check in at the front desk, go drop their child off here and then hit the stairs here to go downstairs or go into the fitness area. We included an indoor playground component right here, that's kind of front and center. Ability for windows and natural light and also gives us, you know, good exiting out of that area. The weight and cardio area, we looked at stretching along the existing bleacher area. So we'd build over the bleachers, their concrete and we just infill on top of those. We showed some pop outs here, one, get some natural light into that area. Two, there's the ability to have windows that look out over an aquatics area. Here are two fitness studios. And then we took, right now, there's a spinning room down on the lower level. We're proposing to move it up on this upper level. And then we have some areas here that's, you know, we need this exiting out the back, but it also works as a great stretching area and warm-up area prior to using the fitness studios or going into spinning classes and so on. The gray area, with a facility like this, with all the fitness, you know, staff in the facility struggles with storage needs. It's one of those things that always gets either cut out of facilities or if it's provided from the get-go, it usually gets turned into space to put an activity in. So we're trying to claim some of that back. So that's, you know, kind of the upper level and this is your existing track that goes around the gymnasium. Now down to the lower level, existing, here's a stair. We, we planned on a new stair to get in and have a convenient access down to the darker teal area or the, what we call the wet locker rooms. So they're there to access the pool. It's, you know, people are in and out of the pool, it's kind of the sloppy area. And also, to handle a program like aquatics, you do need more locker facilities. And also, there's a protocol from going from dry to wet before you go in the pool, taking showers, those types of things. So it's kind of a state mandated item also. So this was, right now, is being used as a spinning room. We reclaim that as storage, circulation, existing gymnasium. Once again, opportunity here for another, we label this party room, it could also be a meeting room. It's, it's that one that get displaced up above. Some more storage, talking with Jamie and, and looking at the, the plan, it was kind of nice to have something that was central because there's a lot of turnover of equipment and different things you need in and out. So if we could have it central, it makes it a little more efficient to operate. Then with, you know, having wet locker rooms here, we provided some jan- additional janitor space here, just to keep things clean and so on. janitor space here, just to keep things clean and so on. This area here, this mauve color, that's a a larger multipurpose room. Um, almost three thousand square feet with a large storage component, so you can turn that over, have table set up for one thing. You could have, you know, a small, you know, senior concert venue. You could do a variety of things in there. So I think it's important to have that storage component right off of it. And then aquatics. We 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 plugged in, you know, a zero-depth pool here, so it's a type that starts at, you know, floor level ramps down into about eighteen inches of water, then can go a little deeper. We showed a little current channel here. Um, plunge pool with a slide component, you know, could poke out through the walls, comes down into the water, um, your deck space here. And then really a recreational lap pool, so for water aerobics classes, um, swimming, uh, exercise, that type of stuff. And then the potential to pop out, um, you know, for whirlpool. We didn't get into all the detail, but we're showing an area for a whirlpool. Seems to be um pretty popular in a lot of these facilities. And then um just an area here, because of the exposure being west and south, um, the opportunity to open that up, get some glass in there and some natural light into the pool area. The gray areas here, once again, storage, you have a little more storage components for aquatics, uh, different things you use for the pool. And then um the mechanical requirements are are pretty big for a swimming pool, so we wanted to create space for that and identify that component. So with that, um, we kinda took a, you know, step back. How does this fit on the site? We already know how the existing community center works. Um, like I mentioned earlier with the two-sheet ice arena facility, I think it's it's important to look at growth in the future. You 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 fill this out, is there an opportunity, there's there's space on the site to fit outdoor aquatics if so desired? Um, with that, you'd have to rework the existing parking lot a little bit and that's what we're showing here. And then this large rectangle down in here is a potential for a future sports dome. Um, we did look at putting it up in here. Um, that required relocating, you know, a baseball field. Also, there's a lot of grade change here, so it gets um very expensive to build if we have to retain things. And um right in here, it fit in here, kinda allowed us to to maintain a trail and be on relatively flat land. And we we kinda see the the dome as that element that's somewhat separate, almost like a ice arena, from community center activities. You show up to do a soccer practice, do uh indoor, um, you know, homeschool kids will come during the day, have activities in there, those types of things. And also, there's just the reality of our climate. Um, you have a dome, you need access around it for service, snow clearing, all those types of things. So that, um, I threw a lot at ya shortly, a lot of a lot of building stuff. Any questions before I move on to the next slide?
Anyone have questions? I have, actually, I do, I have one. What on this is outside the current footprint of the building?
Okay. Um, can you see the mouse here?
Yep.
I'm in the upper left-hand corner. So, right around all, where I'm going around is all existing except this little gray block here.
Okay.
Okay, that's the pool mechanical room. And then the rest of it, all the way around, is all existing.
Okay.
Okay? We would have, um, for the out, uh, children's play center, we would have a little bump out right here.
Got it.
Okay? Um, this kinda steely blue color with the outdoor aquatics, that's all outside the building and so on. So we're, we're pretty much staying within the footprint. Except for, you know, about six hundred, seven hundred square feet for the indoor playground and about four to five hundred plus square feet for the pool mechanical.
All right.
Okay?
Thank you.
Yep. So with that, um, what are the costs? It's always, always the question. Um, I think on the right, the new ice facility, um, those are costs you saw on March third. Um, you know, sixteen point seven million dollar budget with that. I rounded off the numbers from the construction cost estimate. They were, you know, like fourteen million, nine hundred and eighty-nine thou-, you know, some big number. I just wanted to keep them in in big chunks relative uh to the cost. So construction estimate for the new ice is fifteen million. We put a soft cost allowance in of one point seven million. Now, soft costs, everyone asks, you know, what are those? Um, that's your architectural engineering fees, it's your furniture fixtures and equipment, um, it's your sack and whack charges, sewer access charge, um, waste access charge, uh, telephone systems, um, shovels, hoses, all that stuff you need to operate. Um, you could have some legal costs in there, um, you know, reviewing contracts, doing whatever. So i- it's that place that is all the non-bricks and mortar and and you need a a spot for it. With the soft cost allowance on this one, um, you know, you're already in the ice business, so you have some of those big purchases. You own the Zamboni, you have um tools, shovels, all that stuff, all adds up and we can just translate right over, you know? Staff is trained already, um, so there's some economies there. So, um, we feel like that's a a pretty solid allowance, so it gives you a total project cost estimate of sixteen point seven, based off the plan you saw. Um, we broke the um cost for the community center renovation kind of in the two blocks here. So, indoor aquatics, we have the construction estimate, six point seven million. We have soft costs for this at twenty percent of the construction cost estimate. Um, a lot of times in a newer facility, um, for a community center, not an ice arena, community center, you may be in the thirty percent range. We lowered it because there's a lot of infrastructure there. You have some of those economies already. Um, so, uh, we feel very comfortable with this uh construction es- uh allowance for the soft cost. So that puts you at a total project cost of eight million, forty thousand dollars for the indoor aquatics component. Um, there's a little overlap here, you know, what's included in aquatics versus what's included in the next line item down, the community center upgrades. Kinda have a wall that you share between the fitness and so on. So we, we put the uh structure for that floor for the fitness area over the bleachers. We included that in the indoor aquatics number. Um, just felt like you couldn't have the aquatics unless you had that wall, so we we push it that way. And then the community center upgrades, three point three million. So that includes the uh indoor playground, um, you know, teen, senior area, infilling that floor, creating those uh aerobics rooms, um, building that new stair, accessing the lower level, um, the repurposing of the lower level areas with the multipurpose space, expanding the admin area a little bit. So, um, that uh, that that encompasses that. Once again, we put some soft costs on there for a total project cost estimate, three million, nine hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And then the last item, sports dome budget. Um, we did not do, uh, the cost estimator didn't, didn't take off, you know, all the doors and quantities of of uh turf and so on. What we did is we based this off of really a Dyna Sports Dome. The cost estimator that I use for this is the same one that dealt with that. And um we updated a little bit because the those numbers are two years old. So what we wanted to show is you're somewhere in that five point five to six million dollar range for something similar to a Dyna. What that is, it's a full-size soccer dome, but it also includes uh an attached building, that's the lobby, some toilet facilities, those types of things, also a maintenance component uh to store things. Um, you know, we could probably get this down as low as four and a half to five million. Um, it could increase up to seven million. There's so many options with domes, with the type of fabrics, the type of lighting, the ti- you know, all that stuff, type of turf you use. Um, but bottom line, you're probably not gonna build something for three to four million dollars and it's probably not gonna be eight or nine million. We're trying to give you an order of magnitude for that, that component.
And when you're talking dome, you're talking about a...
Fabric dome.
Fabric roof facility that would come off during the summer?
Yep.
And go back on in the fall?
Exactly. Or you could keep it up all year round.
Okay.
Um, you know, some places do that and, you know, they have a life expectancy to them. So, we did that as really the most economical way to cover an area that large. Um, you can do them as hard structure, the costs go up significantly because of the big spans and the height you need.
Has it loose?
What's the life expectancy on the dome?
What's that?
Life expectancy on a dome?
Uh, typically, the fabric, uh, twenty years. And then you have to replace the fabric, you know, that big concrete beam that holds it down, that lasts forever. Um, but it's, it's really replacing that, that fabric. And and what can age it is how many times it comes up and down and how it's stored. So, um, St. Croix Valley, they're looking at, you know, new, I did that dome way back in the day, and uh they're starting to look at replacing their fabric. And it's been close to twenty years. So.
Okay? Pastor Lehman?
What percentage of that price is the fabric?
Of this one?
Yep.
You know, I I don't have it with me, but I wanna say the fabric itself was, I could get you the number, so don't hold me to this, but it it was right around a million, million two. And then there's a lot of costs in that grade beam, a lot of costs in the turf and then the big mechanical units that inflate it. But I could get the actual number, I could send it through to Jamie. We just priced one out for a local school, um, where it got into a lot of detail with the uh fabric manufacturer, so I have pricing that's less than three months old on that, so I could get that.
Pastor Whiting, you had a question too?
Same one as Counsel Lehman.
All right.
Okay?
Yeah.
With that, I'm gonna turn it back over to Jeff, 'cause he took our plans and then he had to run the operational component to it.
Thank you.
Yes, this is just a continuation of the feasibility process. It's the other side of it. Um, that uh really ran parallel to Tom's work with looking at the cost estimating for the uh capital side for for the uh construction. So, through this process, we started to develop a operating plan, operating pro forma, if you will, um, to help understand uh yearly commitment required by the city on an annual basis to operate these facilities or or components. Uh, I I might, I wanna step back for a moment just to um frame in a couple things about um the the feasibility process a- as background. Um, we didn't talk about it before, but um my, i- i- within our company, we have a great deal of experience of operating uh recreation, leisure and sports facilities. I spent twenty-eight years in public recreation, uh, operating facilities uh similar to your community center here in in Shakopee. And the reason I bring that up is, I think, I I wanna frame this in from the standpoint of when we are doing our feasibility studies, we have a tendency to be very conservative with those. We have walked a mile in Jamie's shoes and in staff's shoes, so we know what that's like. And so as a result, we try to be very realistic with the expenses and if anything, uh, conservative on on the revenue projection. So, we kinda carried that theme uh throughout the development here. Um, and also a point, you know, we've completed over six hundred of these studies and our company's been around twenty-three years and we completed over six hundred of these studies. And we have about two hundred facilities that are up and operating today as a result of that planning process. Remember I said before, I'm not an architect or an engineer, so we didn't build anything, but facilities that have resulted from our planning process. And I, and I think the, the point that I'm I'm trying to raise with that is not every project we are involved with gets built. And as I mentioned earlier, we, you know, we really don't have anything vested in in the outcome, so that really allows us to be independent, if you will, and and put our honest assessment down in terms of what we think is gonna happen. And uh we're, we're less concerned with the outcome and and more concerned with providing a- as a council and as a city, useful tools to help in the decision-making process. Uh, we're not here to say you should or shouldn't build or move forward, we're just trying to provide you uh so- some tools to help along, along the way and help make that decision. So what you have uh before you is a um line item description of the revenues. And I might wanna, I I wanna point out here, what you see, the column you see for existing budget, uh, that's not the total parks and recreation budget. That represents more the community center and uh it its operations and and programming budget. Uh, but we included that, so you have some reference or or benchmark as we looked at these various components of of your plan in terms of trying to assess the revenue and and the expenses. So a- again, we identified all of the uh revenue sources uh that are currently in your, your line item budget. And uh we also, uh, well, I wanna back up if I can. So clearly at the bottom, you're, you're seeing the the total revenues, uh, what we're estimating uh from these, these components. Uh, seven hundred and thirteen thousand from uh what I I'm calling here the expanded community center, ice arena, four hundred and, uh, five hundred and forty-five thousand and then the aquatic piece uh generating about three hundred thousand. And a turf center, uh, at this point, um, hundred and eleven thousand in operating revenues. So the other side of the equation, of course, is the expense side. And um I I might add that uh not only on the expense side, but the revenue side, we uh work closely with Jamie uh and and staff in the development of this. Uh, so we've, we've had the chance to to share and and discuss and and uh I I guess develop this, this instrument that you see before you. Uh, but we identified all the staffing costs, uh, we got into all the operating line items, uh, again, that are typical to your budget. Um, and this list is obviously long. I apologize, it's hard to read, uh, but I did want to give counsel a sense for the detail that went into these projections, so you knew we weren't just uh pulling stuff out of the air, that there are some basis and some background to the the numbers that we're using to calculate the expenses and revenues. And at the um uh bottom of of this page, again, you can see the total expenses for uh the community centerpiece, one point five, another eight hundred and ninety-five thousand for ice, uh, a little over one million for the pool operation and uh for the sports dome, about five hundred and forty-two thousand. Um, couple other items from an expense side, we did not calculate any debt service into these calculations. Um, generally speaking, we have found that in municipal projects we work with, there's typically separate taxing uh structure, funding sources for those that don't come back to the operating budget, so we did not include that. Uh, nor did we include any capital replacement uh funding, um, because the city of Shakopee has the building rental line items and program in 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 place, um, as as a funding source. So, with that, that um uh concludes our, our presentation and we welcome any questions um and from, from counsel at this point.
Pastor Lehman?
I guess it would've been nice to be, had this information ahead of time, since this is the first time I've seen it. Um, when might I expect to have a copy of these items so that I can look them over in more detail?
The, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Uh, I assume you can provide these to staff or we'll save them to our drives this evening?
Yes, absolutely.
We'll email them to counsel before we go home tonight.
Okay. Yeah, and and Jamie's point is, um, this information's kind of extracted from the working drafts, uh, just almost like an executive summary of you will, if you will, for the final report. So, uh, we still owe the city that, that final report, but in in concept, they're, they're completed uh uh probably ninety-five percent level.
Other questions? Pastor Mogul?
Um, I see that these also don't incre- include recreation programming numbers. Jamie, can you get those for us as well?
Yes, I have.
What we take in right now? Okay.
That looks so painful.
Sorry. I need a massage. I I did bring our budget, just to give you an idea, 'cause I thought that you might ask that. Um, our overall operating budget uh for twenty fifteen that we've budgeted for is two point five million, which is our whole recreation budget. One point one million of that is revenue. So, we have about eight hundred thousand on here as revenue, that's just from the aquatics, the community center and the um...
Ice arena?
Ice arena, yes, sorry. My point. Um, so about three hundred to three hundred and fifty thousand in revenue comes from our recreation programs, which we have in our whole recreation budget, nine separate divisions. So this is four of those divisions. The other five divisions are, um, some are re- some have revenue to them, some do not. Our biggest one is the recreation programs, which we didn't include because those programs typically happen in our park shelters, outside, um, at our different park facilities, on our athletic fields. They don't necessarily need the community center or the ice arena in order to do those programs. Thank you.
Um, I have a question about the market study piece.
Yes, sir.
So with the work that you've done, we don't have, uh, we have a... So with the work that you've done, we don't have, uh, we have a few within Shakopee of just twenty-four, seven
Correct.
private businesses, and there's nothing of a full-fledged, uh, at least currently, um, within that service area that you identified, I don't think, um, full-fledged fitness center, gym, uh, type facility. What's the probability and possibility of someone partnering with us, and have you had any experience with that in the past of private business helping out with something like this, or, or how that works in your experience?
Um, we're seeing all kinds of, of collaboration that's occurring in, in the marketplace. And all you have to do is look at the cost estimates to build to understand why. In some cases, it exceeds what one entity can afford to, to contribute, uh, or over extends it. Uh, there are a number of examples of um, joint municipal YMCA projects. In some cases, hospitals are involved, and even in, in the Twin Cities, you've got some examples of uh, private clubs uh, coming in. Lifetime, I believe, is in Maple Grove and Chaplain, and uh, I think there are one other, Plymouth, I, I think is the other location. So you have some examples of that right here in the Twin Cities, so to your point, absolutely, there's, there's those collaborative opportunities. This did not take any of that into consideration, we just said, look, if this was standalone and you're operating it, we didn't make any assumptions of who, necessarily who is going to operate, but if we operate it like it is today, this is what it would cost, and this is the revenues that would be generated.
Okay. Counsel Whiting.
You indicated on your revenue side of your expenses here, uh, with the proposed community center upgrade, uh, quite a bit of an enhancement in the revenues coming in.
Yes.
For just that component.
Yes.
How do you base that, and is that on the general service area that you talked about, or just the Shakopee area?
Uh, i- i- it's both, uh, but, but probably what drove that more than anything else is some of the enhancements. Not necessarily increased square footage, but some of the enhancements that uh, this proposal is included for the community center. Things that, such as uh, child watch. I, I can't tell you how important that is. Again, looking at your demographics, being, being younger, you have a lot of um, moms and or dads that uh, are, are possibly homeless preschoolers. And it's, where do they go, uh, to exercise and to participate? So that's part of it, of having access to that. Uh, I certainly think uh, the, you know, the, the expansion or the, the enhancement of some of your fitness areas are, are going to increase uh, participation significantly. Uh, even, it's crazy as my son, because I know when you look at the dollars and cents between the, the the cost to operate the pool and the revenues, just having the pool and the building brings in more people. Uh, there's, you know, there's probably no different than if you're driving down the highway, and there's two hotels, and one of them has a pool and one doesn't, you know, a lot of times, you, you're, you're drawn to the one that has a pool, even though you might not swim, it's, it's a perceived value. So I think, to answer your question, uh, I, I, I think it's the enhancements of those other areas that are going to drive more participation.
Good, thank you. One other comment, if I may.
Please.
I noticed we have some of our senior group, uh, senior club here tonight, and I've noticed we have in some of our drawings here, and uh, this is just drawings, of course, but we have the teen center and the senior center together. And in the end, and I know it might take away from some of the revenue generating space, but I would like to see that separated out, so they have a dedicated space, you know. If we're going to talk about it, we might as well throw that in.
There you go. Counsel Lehman.
Couple of questions in case I can't find the answers in when I study these reports. The first one is uh, you had a, a sheet up there that showed twenty-ten, twenty-fourteen, twenty-nineteen uses. And I guess your twenty-nineteen projections, what percentage of that increase is based on population growth or expected population growth?
Um, not a great deal, uh, to be honest with you, and I, and I can actually go, uh, that is not a calculation that we typically uh, look at in terms of a percentage of, of that population uh, growth, but uh, certainly as your community continues to grow, those are, you know, you're, you're going to get uh, more participation, uh, just with the population growth.
Okay, and then in your uh, ex, your revenue charts, future revenue, is there, did you calculate in any lost uh, lost membership or lost use, uh, priced out of, out of the use?
Um.
For whatever reason it might be.
No, and, and thank you for asking that, because that was one of the points I wanted to make. This pro forma uh, that's before you was built with your current fee structure in place. So, i- if, um, if, uh, council member, if, if your question is, you know, if we build this, will people not be able to afford it? At this point, what we're showing is the same fee structure.
Well, I guess I'm asking from a different perspective. If hypothetically, if we had a revenue, or a, a referendum for this, and the average household paid, you know, a hundred bucks a year, or whatever the cost is, um, and then the fee structure is updated on a yearly basis, what percentage of households may be priced out of using it? Some are going to say, you know, I can't afford to pay, I can't afford to use it anymore.
Correct.
Or they might find it cheaper somewhere else, or they, maybe they lost their job, or whatever the case might be, you're going to have some percentage fallout.
Yes.
Charles is going to have a new percentage that comes in with new things.
A- a- absolutely, and, and I, and I'll say this, a- again, please understand where I'm coming from, this is, we have a national practice, and we're all, all over the country. Um, you, you as, as counsel and as a city uh, have provided what I would consider very, very, very favorable rates for access to your parks and recreation services. Um, i- i- if you were to, to benchmark and, and look at um, developing some uh, level of service comparisons, I think you would find that uh, you are near the bottom, certainly in the bottom third in terms of, of what you charge. Now that being said, the other demographic characteristic of the community you need to keep in mind is uh, you have about nine percent of your population with households of under twenty-five thousand. I think you could reasonably assume that those are the families, A, that don't have the disposable income to participate, but B, might also be the opportunity as a city, or perhaps some collaboratives, to look at developing or advancing your existing scholarship program. Uh, so that, in a sense, nobody is turned away.
Other questions? All right, let's, if you guys can stick around for us, we'll go into the financial piece of it, and then we'll have kind of a, a discussion after, is that work? All right, we're going to move on to uh, seven B, the financing options for new or expanded recreational facilities.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Um, you have in your packet tonight a memo providing an overview of financing options from Mr. Paul Steinman from Springstead Group. Obviously, I am not him. He is out of town um, this week, so I'm going to do my best to walk you through the financing options that he has presented in the memo. In answer to the best of my ability, your questions, we may need to follow up with him on another evening um, for detailed questions about the financing piece of this. The financing options that have been presented to you by Springstead are financing for the capital costs of the project, or in other words, the construction costs of the project. As you've just heard in the first portion of the feasibility study, the city would ultimately need to identify funding for both the capital and the operating costs of this project. The financing options available to the city are dictated by several things. At the biggest level, they're dictated by state law. The state of Minnesota sets out what financing options are legally available to cities like ours. Um, and those financing options vary by type of project. So for example, the financing options we would have if we were looking to build a new fire station are different than the financing options we have for recreational facilities. State law is pretty specific, and it provides a more narrow list of financing options when you get into um, recreational components than it does for other projects that a city might undertake. Secondly, once you get beyond what's legally allowable under state law, you get into what's good or accepted financial practices for financing projects like these. And then thirdly, you add to that mix, community preference and what the community um, will support. The options that have been presented to you differ in a variety of ways, but I would suggest that the ways they differ um, most significantly are in the maximum repayment term. You'll see some options that have to be paid back within ten years, others that can be paid back over twenty years, and still others that could be paid back over thirty years. Obviously, the faster you pay it back, the higher your annual payment on that debt service is going to be. Interest rates vary depending upon which financing option you look at as, and they have varying um, impacts on the city's credit rating and our borrowing capacity for other projects. The list provided to you by Springstead lays out seven different options for financing a project of this type. Really quickly, those are bonds approved by a voter referendum, tax abatement bonds, lease revenue bonds, sales tax revenue bonds, internal loans, recreational facilities revenue bonds, or some combination of the above. You do not have to use a single financing source for the entire project, you could break it up and finance different parts in different um, fashions. So walking through them really quickly, um, and at a pretty high level. First option presented in the memo is referendum bonds. As the word referendum suggests, these require voter approval. They do provide um, a very low interest rate compared to other options. And a referendum bond also provides us with the longest repayment term, so we could spread our payment out over thirty years. This option does have some upfront costs to actually conduct the referendum, as well as bonding costs of selling the bonds, and preparing to sell the bonds creates some costs for the city. Second option presented in the memo are tax abatement bonds. These do not require voter approval, they would be approved by the city council following a public hearing. They would have the same interest rate at any given time as v- bonds approved by a referendum. Um, but instead of being able to spread your payment out over thirty years, in this case, with abatement bonds, you would need to repay them in no more than twenty years. Again, you have some upfront costs to set up the abatement district and to sell the bonds. Lastly, um, using these would use a portion of the city's abatement authority. And what I mean by that is that state law dictates that cities may abate no more than ten percent of their net tax capacity in any given year. So walking through a quick calculation here, the city's current net tax capacity is forty-five point eight million dollars. So ten percent of that is about four point five, almost four point six million. We currently have two hundred and eighty-one thousand, two hundred and seventeen dollars in outstanding abatements. Um, to date, those are all economic development-related abatements that the city has undertaken. That leaves us with almost four point three million dollars in available abatement authority left. If you wanted, for example, to use twenty million dollars in abatement bonds, that would take up about one point three of that four point three, and you would still have almost three million dollars in abatement authority left. The third option presented in the memo are lease revenue bonds. Under this structure, the EDA would issue bonds, build, and own the facility, and then the EDA would lease it to the city for the amount of the annual debt service payment. Lease revenue bonds are not backed by the general obligation of the taxpayers of the city. Therefore, they carry a higher interest rate um, than referendum or tax abatement bonds. Another option technically would be sales tax revenue bonds, however, that first bullet point is really important. This requires special legislative permission and a referendum of the voters, and that's a pretty high hurdle um, to overcome. If, if we were to go that route, um, successfully, the city would then impose a local sales tax, issue bonds, and use the revenue from the sales tax to make those annual debt service payments. Next option would be use of existing city funds, and this can fall into two categories. One is a flat-out use of fund balance with no repayment. The second um, subset of this would be an inter-fund loan, where we take money from one city fund um, to use for this purpose, but it gets repaid with interest over time. If you're going to look to use fund balance without a plan to repay it, you need to look at what basically amounts to the city's savings accounts. Those would be our internal service funds or our general fund fund balance. These are funds that have accumulated through council action over the years of setting aside general fund dollars for specific purposes and future uses. You folks, as well as prior council members, have made those decisions, and you have the option to reverse course or alter course and use those funds for a different purpose than they were originally set aside for it. If you were going to look at an inter-fund loan, you could do, use those insert, internal service funds again. Um, those, as noted in the bullet point above, don't have to be repaid, but you could do a loan out of there and say that you want to repay them over time. Or you could look to an inter-fund loan from one of the city's enterprise funds. We have two enterprise funds, our sanitary sewer fund and our surface water fund. The money in those accounts comes through user fees and charges collected by um, collected on the Shakopee Public Utilities Bill, but on behalf of the city, the city sets the rate, and Spuck does just the billing portion for us, but we ha, we can talk a little bit about the fund balances in each of those accounts. Those would have to be repaid with interest, um, if you chose to use them as the source of an inter-fund loan. And they would need to be repaid, uh, most likely within ten years. Another item listed in the memo is recreation facility revenue bonds. In this, in situation, the city bonds for, builds, and owns the facility, and leases it to a nonprofit corporation. That nonprofit must have the funds to make the annual rent payments equal to the annual debt service on the facility. This is going to have a higher interest rate, and there may actually be some difficulty selling the bonds. They're considered a higher risk investment that this structure will actually work out over the long term. So you're going to have higher interest rates going this route. So, when you talk about repayment, uh, Mr. Steinman has given us a very rough estimate of what the annual debt service would look like um, per year if we borrowed twenty million dollars over twenty years. So this particular scenario doesn't look at an inter-fund loan, because as I mentioned, those would need to be repaid over ten years. And he was very, very, very adamant that I tell you not to get too attached to these numbers of like, one million, three hundred and forty-four thousand per year. It's a very preliminary estimate, interest rates change from when these estimates are made to when the bonds are actually sold. There's a lot more, you know, going through this with a fine-tooth comb that would be needed. But on the flip side, I told him I needed some concept of, of what the debt service might look like, so. For a GO bond, which would be the revenue, uh, the referendum bond or the tax abatement bond, you roughly might be looking at an annual debt service payment of one million, three hundred and forty-four thousand per year for twenty years, if you were looking to bond for twenty million. Obviously, if you bond for less, those annual payments are going to go down, if you bond for more, they're going to go up. We just wanted to give you some reference point to start with. Um, all of the, with the exception of flat-out using some of the city's internal savings, all of the options that have prevent, presented to you are borrowing money. And that borrowing has to be paid back. So once the debt has been issued, or the funds have been um, borrowed from an inter-fund loan, how would the city repay them? Your options basically are using existing levy dollars, um, increasing the city's levy to bring in new levy dollars. Um, and, you know, we're open for suggestions, but those are really the big ones at the city's disposal. As you heard in the earlier presentation, expanded facilities are projected to bring in expanded revenue. But the assumption here is that that revenue is needed to offset the operating costs um, of the expanded facilities, and would not be available to help pay the debt service on the construction costs.
Counsel Lehman.
Does the existing one point four million dollar operational subsidy on the current facility, does that go away with an expansion, or does that number increase? That's probably for these guys over here, huh?
Yeah. It's going to, it's going to increase, but I couldn't tell It's gonna, it's gonna increase, but I couldn't tell you exactly how much. They're, they're on track to project that for us.
Because that's separate from this.
It is.
So, that, that would be an additional levy cost.
Most likely, yes. Existing levy dollars. So, this is a list of the city's outstanding debt. They get these years and letters that go with each debt issuance. Two of them are for specific buildings that the city currently owns and is paying off. The other ones in general are more for infrastructure projects. I've given you the maturity date of each of those debt issuances, what we ha, need to pay this year on them. But then you will see that we've only levied for three of them in this year's levy. The other ones are being paid, four of them by fund balance, and one of them through our building rent system. But when we talk about having existing levy dollars possibly available to pay for a project like that, we're looking at specifically at this first line. This 2006A, we've already made our final payment. You know, we levied for it this year, and, and it's already gone out the door. So, 206A is now, as we stand here today on March 31st, is paid off. So, you could take and continue to levy that $343,000 in next year's levy, and then you would have that funding available to pay off new debt service. As you go down the list, there's a couple that are projected to come off in 2017. One of them, we're not levying for though, so it doesn't really free up money to put towards another service. The fire station number one, we have a couple more years of payment, and then that will come off the tax rolls. But I do wanna caution you not to get too far down this list because these payments down here that go into 2019 and 2021 and so on, we're currently paying those with fund balance. I can't stand here tonight and tell you that that's sustainable all the way to the maturity date of those, those bond issuances. As, with council's direction, if you want more work done on that, we can do further projections on those debt service issues to see if they can continue to be sustained by fund balance or if we can project a year when they may need to fall back to levy dollars. But I can't tell you tonight that in 20, you know, 18, you'll have this much money and so forth because some of that may be needed for those that we're currently using fund balance for.
Can you explain real quick what fund balance is, just so everybody's on the same page?
It's money that the city has on hand from having underspent the budget in previous years. Assessments coming in, interest earnings that are higher than was budgeted for and turns out to, you know, create money to make next year's payment with.
That's what I did. Thank you.
Excess salt money. Didn't use a whole lot of salt this year, so it's excess salt money.
We do have several things that we buy, like gas and salt that, that... Before I go here, actually, I wanna go to this table. We talked about the possibility of using funds on hand. And as I noted, there's kind of two different options here. There's outright using funds that we have on hand and stating from the start that we do not intend to repay those. And you have a certain segment of your funds that you could legally do that with. And then there's also inter-fund loans. So, this is a list of all of the funds that the city has and their balance as of December 31st, 2014. But that's a preliminary. That means literally as of that day, we had not, we don't close out 2014 until all the bills get paid. So, bills from 2014 continue to trickle in in January and February, and our audit is not yet complete. So, these are unaudited numbers, and they're preliminary numbers. But we have our general fund, fund balance estimated at about a little over $12 million currently. I do, the state of Minnesota encourages cities to keep this amount between 40 and 45% of a year's operating budget. And the reason for that, in large, there's a variety of reasons. It's always good to have kind of a rainy day fund. But the big-picture reason for that is that the city's main source of income is its property taxes. And just like our residents pay their property taxes twice a year, the city gets property tax revenue from the county twice a year, in June and December. And that payment we get in December needs to carry us all the way through the beginning of the next calendar year. So, to compare it to your home budget, this is like looking at the balance on your checking account the day you got paid and before the mortgage came out. You know, it's that high point of, of your checking account. But that's what we estimate to have in there. Those are, other than meeting the recommended 40 to 45%, and this right now is looking like it'll be a little bit in excess of 45%. The general fund, fund balance is up to the council's discretion how it gets spent. So, you could pull a little bit of money out of there conceivably. The next three funds that are in yellow are really our infrastructure funds. This, these are the monies that we use to build streets and pay for sanitary sewer service and our surface water fund. The capital improvement fund, you see a balance in there. Last year's projects had not been paid for at the time these numbers were calculated. So, that's really a fluctuating number and not an account that's generally considered to have a significant balance. The sewer fund has about $13 million in cash as of December 31st, and the surface water fund has about 15.8. As we get more detailed into this, if you choose to get more detailed into this, we can go through projected expenditures from those two funds. In a nutshell, I can tell you that the sanitary sewer fund has significant planned expenditures from it in the upcoming five years. The surface water fund, a little bit less so. So, if you were looking for a source for an inter-fund loan, at first blush, that surface water fund might be one to look at.
Counsel Lehman.
I would, I would caution about the surface water fund because the new state requirement that Mr. Looney's telling us about, that NP, whatever he calls it. If they enact that, we're gonna instantly have significant cost.
This is true, and in anticipation of that, Mr. Looney spoke to our advisors on this fund and those projects today. And their best projection is that those new requirements are eight to nine years out. So, if you gave yourself a 10-year loan, most of it would have been paid back by eight years, and by 10 years, it would be fully paid back under these scenarios. But yes, there's certainly the possibility of increased regulatory responsibilities being imposed on the city from higher levels of government and the need to go to this fund. The next set of funds are what I would consider the city's savings accounts. These are funds that council by policy has chosen to build up over the years and set money aside for certain things. So, you have the equipment IS fund. That's basically the city's fleet, our rolling stock. So, we buy squad cars and fire trucks and snowplows and vehicles, pickup trucks, large lawn mowers, all, you know, the rolling stock of the city is paid for out of the equipment fund. The park asset fund, we set aside money every year, and we do major park kind of rehab projects. So, if a tennis court needs to be resurfaced, it would come out of the park asset fund. If an older playground had equipment that needed to be replaced because existing equipment had seen its full lifespan, that type of project would come out of the park asset fund. It's a relatively new fund, and at $2 million, it's not one that staff generally considers to have excess money in.
And isn't that the park asset fund where the building, the communities are used?
Yes, good point. The community centers' annual building rent goes into the park asset fund. So, if you were looking at a maintenance project on our existing sheet of ice, let's say, and we do have a significant maintenance project planned out in the multi-year plan for that, right now that would come from that park asset fund. We have an information technology IS fund with the smallest balance of all. Each of our departments pays a charge into the IT fund, and we use that to buy computers and servers and things. The building IS fund. Each of our city buildings, the police stations, the fire stations, the city hall, the departments that occupy those buildings pay rent on an annual basis, and it goes into this building IS fund. And then when that building needs a new boiler or a new air conditioner or a new roof, we use the money in that fund to pay for those projects. And it, it helps us avoid having to ask for significant levy increases in a given year because we have a specific project that needs to be done in that year. That fund, that building IS fund, also pays the debt service on the public works building. So, the equivalent basically of about a $465,000 mortgage payment on the public works building comes out of that fund every year. And last but not least, we have an employee benefits fund. This is part of good accounting. We have obligations in the form of accrued vacation and sick leave that would have to be paid out if employees left or, when employees leave, we pay that out. And this is accounting for those obligations and having the money on hand. So, those are your various IS funds and their current balances. And then just to give you a complete picture, we have all of these other funds that serve different purposes. Some of them, you know, significantly larger than others. In general, I would say none of those are likely sources for inter-fund loans or expenditure of funds. They're all for very dedicated, specific purposes. Probably the large, the largest balance on there that might catch your eye would be the park reserve fund. That's money that comes in through the payment of the park dedication fee at the time a parcel of land develops. Statutorily, we have to use that for the development of new parks. And that money, we could not legally use for this type of project. So, that's off limits. The next largest fund on there you see is the transit fund, and we are in the process of paying that out to finalize our obligations in transit and formally merge with MVTA. So, that transit fund will not exist by the end of the year approximately. You know, that one's being phased out. So, I would caution you not to really look at those funds either, so. That's the picture of the funds that the city has on hand. Any questions about that? Got one last slide.
Actually, I do have a question about that, sorry.
Okay.
What's the process for advising from staff as to what the real, not necessarily the real, but what a right-sized fund balance would be? So, like, you take the equipment fund, for example, seven and a half million. And what, is that where we think it should be? Is that where staff recommends it should be? What, how does that happen?
It happens basically by council direction. If council, you know, was seriously looking at that fund and kind of narrowing in on that, that would be a direction you should give us, is we're really looking at that fund. We want staff and possibly the financial consultants at Springstead to really go through it with a fine-tooth comb and come back with projected needs for the next maybe 10 years if you're looking at a possible 10-year inter-fund loaned. And, and we can certainly do that. We have some of that flushed out now. And if the council said, you know, for example, we just used the equipment IS fund and loaned ourselves the money to buy the MINDOT parcels. So, that balance you see there now is a million dollars less just in the last few weeks as we have carried out that transaction, you know, with MINDOT. And the, one of these two water funds, either the sewer or the surface water fund, I can't remember which. We loaned ourselves a million dollars to buy all the garbage in the recycling carts. And people are paying a cart, a rental fee on their quarterly bill through Republic that comes back to the city, and we're gradually repaying that. So, we have certainly done inter-fund loans over the years, and those are two of the most recent ones that are still outstanding and impacting the balances of these funds. And the one out of the equipment fund isn't showing up there because this is a 1231 number, so.
Right.
But if council's interested in having staff go back through these funds and really coming up with as firm as we can projections, we're still looking five and 10 years out at what the city might need, we can certainly do that.
Counsel Lehman.
If, if, if we do go that route, I would prefer any excess in any one of these accounts go back toward buying down the, the tax rate. If we're gonna build a community center, I would prefer a 30-year referendum myself.
We're not to that point of the night yet, so, but thank you for your opinion.
You're welcome.
Okay, I have one more slide. And it sort of gets to that point. We talked about existing levy dollars and, for example, the $343,000 that we're currently wrapping up a debt service payment on that might be available. The other option is to bring in new levy dollars to help cover these debt service payments. And again, using that $20 million in GO bonds repaid over 20 years, we would need to come up with about $1.3 million to make a debt service payment every year. If you added $1.3 million to our existing levy, here are some annual estimated impacts on different values, homes, and businesses to give you a sense of the tax impact. Again, these are very, very preliminary numbers and very rough estimates of what you might see for impacts. But I wanted to give you some point of reference or, or ballpark to work off of.
Isn't a GO bond referendum 30 years?
GO bonds, both the abatement bonds and the referendum bonds would be GO bonds.
That, that's 30 years, I think, not 20.
It depends on which way they're approved. They're both GO bonds, but if they're done through referendum, they could be 30 years. If they're done through abatement, they could only be for 20 years. So, this, this $1.3 million number that Springstead doesn't want you to get attached to is kind of the middle of the road because it's over 20 years. If you went down to 10 years and tried to borrow $20 million and repay it over 10 years, obviously, that annual payment is gonna grow. And if you wanted to spread it out over 30 years by getting it approved by referendum, the amount you have to pay annually is gonna go down. I'd be happy to try to answer any of your questions, but when I get off-script, I get in over my head, so.
All right, do we have, so I'd like to take this, the rest of the discussion since it is 9:30 at night. I'd like to just have any preliminary questions we have for any of the community center information we've been presented with this evening and ask as many of those questions as we have and not get too deep into the discussion of, of what we would like to do and where we want to go with this. I'd like to just set up a timeframe of what we want to do moving forward so that we can have, set up a substantive discussion about these items because we haven't had a chance to really dig into the numbers yet. Counsel Lehman.
It might be easier to ask questions of the consultant if I had the information that they have in front of me.
That's, that's what I'm saying, is that if there's any questions you have right now, we ask those, but then we, we have to have another discussion to get in, in-depth on the details. This is just, this is just the information, and we can look at that, and then we can come back with all the information that we've been presented with tonight and have a big discussion about those kinds of things. Counsel Whitey.
Yeah, I had a question for some of the consultants here tonight. And it has to do with, on that second sheet of ice facility, can we work the costs down by changing the building materials rather than a prefab using like metal construction, things like that? What's, what's the, what can we work with there? What can we, what can we do?
You know, I have made a pretty good living going back in fixing ice arenas when people try to cheapen them. That's just reality of it. We do find that when you look at the cost per square foot using a precast panel, ultimately ends up being your most economical route to go. I would say if, if we're looking at reducing costs, you look at the amount of seating. We try to squeeze square footage out of it by scrutinizing it a little more. It is a study. So, you know, I would say right now, there's probably a little generous on some square footage just to, to, gonna get a plan and make sure we have all the, the spaces accounted for. And the other thing is, I'm real hesitant to go down a road of cheapening things because you're gonna own it for a long time. And then your capital outlay later on. And that's where I find cities really struggle. So, what we looked at when pricing us out was similar construction quality of your existing community center. So, it's, it's, it's precast, but it's not, you know, there's not a lot of fancy metal panels on it and stone veneer and brick. It's, it's pretty basic. It's, it's pretty basic. There's some glass and so on. But I would, I would take the approach, if you reduce some seating, you know, right now, we plugged in 850. Maybe 600's a better number, with the ability to have more, a little more standing room so you have those, a couple of big varsity events. Because the reason why I say you, you, you kind of attack those things a little bit and, and sharpen the pencil, you reduce occupancy or number of people in the building. It reduces how many toilets you need. It reduces the, how big the lobby needs to be. It kind of has a ripple effect. And I think, you know, if I was sitting in, in your spot, I would, I would look to that direction instead of trying to, you know, maybe put up, like we used to do, you know, a lot of pre-engineered buildings that were not insulated with the right systems. But those were more seasonal rinks, and when you operate these things year-round, there's, there's a lot of problems with them. So, we were looking at full-time operation year-round and something that would work. I can get into the science of all of it, but it gets kind of boring for people.
Just curious where, where we might sharpen that pencil.
Yeah, and I think, you know, and that's the other thing where, you know, Jamie and I have discussed a little bit. It depends on the site. I mean, there's, there's a lot of dollars in building 150 parking stalls. You know, if we can build it somewhere where you can do a shared-use lot, where maybe we're only building 50, and then the other 100, like adjacent to a high school or a middle school or something like that, that's always a benefit. So, I think we got to look at getting creative on that and maybe sharpening some things and seeing if we can bring those numbers down.
Okay, thank you.
Did I answer your question?
Councilor Mogul.
I don't have any questions, but what I was thinking about maybe next step is, since this is a lot to digest, is maybe sending it back to a park board to kind of dive through this. And then I would think that we didn't want at least two open houses with the public. Just a thought.
Councilwoman Whiting.
I think that's a good approach.
Councilman Lehman.
I'm still waiting for the information that was presented tonight.
So, how would you like, so as you get all the information that you presented tonight, what, what would you ideally like as the next step of this discussion?
I would like to get the information that was presented, look it over for probably two weeks or so, or till our next meeting, and then have all of us get together with the folks that we hired and ask all the questions that we have off the information that we just seen for the first time.
So, we have a meeting next Tuesday. That is too soon?
Uh, probably.
Okay.
And then after them questions are all answered, then we have to have a discussion on exactly what is it that we want to do. I mean, do we want, how much, is there a number that we want to spend up to? Is there, is there a threshold? Because if there's no threshold, then you might as well go really big.
Well, that's why I was thinking the two open houses.
And if there is a threshold, you know, either we have to decide that or the public's going to have to decide that, or, or whatever. And, and once you know what that threshold is, then you have to figure out what your priorities are to meet that threshold. At least that's the way we've done it in the past.
Councilwoman Whiting.
I think the threshold part that you're talking about, you know, the, the parks board could kind of flesh it out a little bit. And then through discussions with the public hearings and things, we get a little more input. And both on direction on how we want to finance it, I'm sure, and then what we're looking at here.
Mayor, I think it's okay for the park board to look at what the uses might be, but I think it's improper for have the park board look at the actual financial impacts. They're not elected for the financial impacts.
That's not what I'm saying. I'm saying the public's going to give us that information at a public hearing, whether we want to ready for that or not. That was my point.
I think we should have that information ahead of time. So, if we're, if we're going to have public meetings, it should be this body having these public meetings, as far as the financial piece.
Oh, absolutely.
As far as the use piece, you know, the park board can do that part of it.
Right. Councilor Luce, you had your hand up for a second.
I do not want to see the project cheapened. If we're going to do it, we're going to do it right. No seconds. I think we need at least a month to digest everything that they've given to us. I think after that, then we take some time, let the public digest what we give them, and take a month for that, take another month for the next meeting, get it done properly, let the public be involved totally.
Okay, so, from what I'm hearing from everybody, we come back to talk in-depth about this, the first meeting in May?
I think so.
Is that general consensus there?
Because what is that, the sixth?
Yeah, it moves to a Wednesday, yeah.
Exactly. Your first meeting in May is on a Wednesday because it's been moved from Tuesday night.
All right, and then, public open houses. What does everyone?
I think we're going to have to figure out what, what we're proposing. I mean, if you're going to have an open house, is it just going to be an open house?
I would like to get feedback from people.
Yeah, I would like input.
Yeah, and I, I'm not, you're not calling it like a public hearing. You're looking at like, come in, look at the plans, give it, ask questions.
Like we do for the road projects, like Bruce does for the road projects and that kind of thing.
Get some wheels turning, then you can come back.
Yep.
So, all right, so a couple of those in May after we discuss?
Yeah.
Is that, okay, Jamie? Okay, all right, so, we have tentative plan of taking the information, coming back May 6th, discussing in-depth. I'm assuming that will be the only thing we discuss at that meeting. The project and how we would like to move forward, put some fairly solid concepts together, take it to open houses a couple of times in May throughout the community, and then come back and discuss after that. Councilor Luce?
Open houses, I would think we'd want to stretch them out a little bit further so people can think about it, May and June.
You have vacations in there, too.
I think you set up two and, in a month, and they can make one, or they make the other.
We'll have staff put that together. You're good with that? As to what makes the most sense there? All right, any further questions for this evening?
Councilor Mogul.
I'm making a motion to adjourn to April 7th, 2015 at 7:00 PM.
Do we have a second?
Second.
So, councilwoman Whiting, any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passed unanimously, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody, for being here for this discussion.